Three out for the computer.
I certainly hope that's enough. Did you, uh, you can plug-
Is there a plug in?
Yeah, there should be a s-
Probably not long enough.
Oh.
You know what, we can leave it as a contingency.
There's a power strip right there.
Oh, okay. I'll do, all right. Might as well, huh?
Yeah.
And I say, it's already, yeah, because I know if you don't plug it in-
Right.
That the ten minutes is gonna go.
Plug in. Mine, I got one that has four hours, you know, so that if I didn't wanna plug it in, but if, you're right, after a while it starts-
Push up the next meeting.
Plug in, plug in, plug in.
Yeah, and we don't know what's gonna be with that, so let's, since we got a power strip here, let's be, let's be safe.
Yeah, that would be better and then you don't have to worry.
You want the recorder?
Yes.
Let's see. Power.
Right there, and be sure that it, that it's-
That's taking, yes, I will.
Well, be sure that it's turned on. I don't think you have to do anything.
Let me see, I'm a second, it says I'm charging.
Okay.
Eighty-seven percent and charging, how's that?
All right.
And I had wanted to stay in-
So you're good to go all night?
Hopefully not.
I, you know, I think you're probably those, you should, I'm okay with steady stations.
Public security purpose.
An hour and a half to two hours, that's, you know. I'll let you do your presentation and then ask tons of questions.
I was just concerned that I had to hit a certain key to get that to come up, but evidently not, so that's great.
No, it's great. They've got it all fixed up.
Hello, Jim. Cause IT is definitely a function of age, and I'm too old to be an absolute expert on IT.
I am not an expert on it.
I'm, I'm getting better all the time, actually, but, uh-
I'm good with software applications and stuff, but I don't like, I don't know anything about-
Page up, page down?
No. Uh, yeah, page up, page down, yes.
Okay, so I'm doing page down and nothing's happening.
How about this page up, page down?
Oh, cause I'm looking at that one.
Yeah.
Nothing? Nothing.
It was working before page up, page down.
We leave the tech stuff to the people back in California.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Where the content stuff.
It was working before.
This is the exact same presentation you said is-
Yeah, exact, no difference.
Okay, it was working before.
Huh?
Page up and page down.
Well, Seb's still here, so.
So, so is this in a P V, was this the C N?
See now, now it's working time, look. See, page down.
Okay.
Page up.
You don't want it to be intermittent, though, during the presentation.
I don't think it is, but I can always go to the slides here, in the worst case.
Mm-hmm.
I can always click on the slide.
But it's pretty small type, so.
There we go.
You want to do your page up, page down, okay.
Yep.
And then how do you make it be bigger screen?
I can't make the screen bigger than the screen is.
Oh, no, but the-
Oh.
Resolution on there?
The resolution's not-
Yeah, that we have to tell them about. Yeah, that I, that I, I, I think that's their control.
Think we need that-
Yep, we need them back.
Fine man Joe.
That's a good point, excellent. Yes, it is, because everybody has the system compatible with the way they do it, and then-
All of these, my side.
Yeah, I will take my, my, sure.
Hi, Melissa.
Hi, how are you, Councilor?
I'm really well.
Good.
How are you doing?
I'm doing well, thank you.
It seems to be a resolute, uh-
You know, I've been out there for a change. Cause I sent her emails by mistake, and she'll be no saying, really, Rosemary, I moved.
Oh.
Really, I moved.
I, I know, I, oh, okay, I was, I wanted to move this chair, can I move your box for a minute? Yes.
I mean, I can still show it, but, and I can still control it.
But it's, the resolution is teeny tiny.
The, the resolution on your side is-
You wanna change it to that alternative you showed me before?
Yeah, but let's see, hold on, let's see here.
We'll move it. I'll move it back, cause who's I give you?
Okay, do this.
Okay, I'll, I'll watch it.
She's like so swamped.
Hence, I'm gonna send emails.
Oh, I know, I know.
They part my existence.
Charge my phone lines.
That's exactly, uh, charge my phone, are you charging emails, and- I'm working that, that's how big Councilors want to support it, and the C N is also helping in, uh, dealing with Gerald's houses in my neighborhood.
Lord.
I'll tell you, Houston, the situation has gone away.
Oh, we're to see those flooded out cars and fall self where it's parking lots or the car keys.
Well, I, I don't know. The problem is, you see, it's cutting off this edge right here.
Yeah, 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 it's cutting off entries, that's not solving the problem either.
I think, I think the resolution problem is on, is on your computer. Yes.
Yes.
Oh, the meeting itself?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, everything's, yeah, Joe, Joe's gotta go, well, Adrian's back there. Yeah, we're live streaming it.
Sure.
Yeah.
You wanna try yours, sure.
You wanna plug it in?
It might be better on that one, cause I think the screen resolution of this was the fact, only if I had-
You have the same one, you have the key, right?
Yeah, you can plug it in too.
Want me to shut it down?
No, don't, don't shut it down, but, um-
Do you have to change that?
No.
You should be good to go.
You're there.
Does that work? Looks like it's still cutting off.
It might be just the file itself. Yeah, it's cutting off.
So, what we can do is- Oh, let's see if it opens up in PDF.
No, I don't know.
It's full screen, no, where's full screen? Where's full screen? Actually, I'm just, I'm just-
Full screen.
Full screen, hey. Thank you.
Uh, no, which is there, a few seconds ago. Let me make sure, no, hold on, before you, before you take down, let me make sure that it is switched in. Your laptops are completely secured.
Good, thank you. It's a resolution mismatch.
Yeah, your presentation is kind of wider than-
What they're used to.
This is kind of, this is kind of fashioned, yeah.
You know what it might be, this might be six, uh, nine by sixteen as opposed to three. Try F eight.
Uh, so let's see here, duplicate maybe, that way you can see both for a second.
Why would it work?
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Give it a second. Come on. All right, so, let's see. That's better. Yeah, that's full screen.
There you go.
Yeah.
All right.
Want me to take them out of the way? Unplug it?
Yeah, at least these guys should.
I also put good here powers, I got two.
You worked off the PDF?
Yeah. When you work for a city like this, you have to become self-sufficient enough. We don't have ten people.
I was putting an IT team, uh, something went wrong for ten minutes, it's like, get in.
But, yeah.
And you don't learn.
Well, my, my last job was a small MPO, so that was a de facto IT guy. And then I came here and everything's locked down with IT. Yeah. And then I came here and I was like, what do you mean I have to call you every time? You saw for, so then it actually got tired of giving it our own bodies.
So, are we, are we really thinking different subjects now, trails? Um, so we have to talk about alignment, cause I think I talked to you, the leader, the chairman, about the alignment from Santa Rosa Drive to the rail trail in my neighborhood. And at last I talked to you, Leroy, it seemed like he was in the mix to happen.
I, I think it's still part of the rail trail connection, which went out to bid, I think they just approved the contract maybe in the last month.
Excellent.
I think, I, cause I'm not intimately involved anymore.
I know, you're, you've shifted gears here, but I, should I call Leroy back, questions?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, and that's, I work on the stormwater management plan, I'm just with Leroy and, uh, Melissa, so, I, I can check.
Yeah, as far as I know, it was still connected to that project.
Okay.
Unless they had to mix it for budget, but I, I kind of fell off about it, so.
Well, and quite frankly, the underpass has just taken everybody's great self sort of away.
Yeah, but I'm pretty sure it was on council for approval within the last month, the contract.
Neighbors will ask me periodically, well, once in a while, go, yeah, I'll check in, but-
Yeah. It's funny, cause these projects, you know, it's like, they're imminent, but then, a couple of years, it was like the trail behind my house around Gonzales School.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It was like gonna happen, and then two and a half years go by and it's like, what's going on in this? And then all of a sudden they're out there constructing it, oh.
Neighbors are like, oh, yeah, they, they moved away, they died.
Computer, how do you go from slide, what's, is it up and down here?
Yeah, it's just up and down, so this is just the PDF.
That's great, okay, so you have a PDF, okay, that's fine.
Um, and we'll-
Ultimately, that's what worked, the PDF or that F eight?
The PDF, so I, I just saved it to a PDF and, cause it, cause the PDF brings it into the right, the correct resolution, so.
Good, thank you.
So it looks, works well.
Okay.
Um, I was working on the underpass and the St. Brandon's going into order.
I think this thing, I think you need to have a normal.
It's the typical, you know, I gotta get that sort of back.
No, I might have to get that. You know, let's hang about that later.
Right.
Because the damage of PDFs, since they have better resolution.
They're locked in. I remember, I did, uh, real estate work in Metcalfe, and I remember working with, uh, managers of my area, but I made a negotiation for it, so they could be open.
Yes, well.
But we, I mean, we didn't, we didn't save any of the money.
Yeah, that's a big issue.
Yes, I know.
It just keeps getting higher and higher.
I'm sure I'll look for it at some point here, and I'll figure out it's, it's short, it'd be that bad.
No, it's, it, no, I know that they've just, like, hundred thousand dollars for a rent.
It's more than that, huh? No, Harris.
Yeah, we're there.
Yeah. Now, I just wanted to hear, well, the problems they have with neighbors issues, uh, back on the property.
Oh, we're all-
Not like, uh, because I can go, it's very much. It's, uh, but, but, yeah. Beer, just gets contacted, and you know, so, uh-
Yeah, that's what I did.
You know where I live, right?
And you get the same, sorry, yes, yeah.
And, um, when the rail trail came through, the rail came, we realigned, and then they had realigned it, we told them, so, we discussed beautiful, you know.
Right.
Beautiful trail, and when neighbors went home, listening.
Good.
Those people, they're good along the coast, you know.
That might have, see, you know.
Carrie flat screen, and it's one of the most loved trails because no worries to the extension of the tree, right?
No, it's been in a lot, but people, it's just like a lottery circle one time, people have to, I think, the place we go to. And they assume the worst, we didn't have that, but I mean, it's right near where we're falling, but it's actually, they had a arrow forward inside the drill network.
What time is that, six thirty?
That's, it's fantastic, I mean, if you're going to rail, you're, but like, you're there in five minutes, and people go down, it's just, you're a good beer.
It works like that. Right, so if we hear, of course, we make two hours of sex. I'm hoping, you know, that's- It's putting together just the, just here, and that's, I thought I'd need done, perhaps you done, so, tomorrow is today.
Good, good. Well, this is up, okay.
So, we're, I, I-
Relax. Oh, that'll be kind of what I say.
Yeah, did you have to set up that word for that word? You don't have to study that word. I think it's more of a first word.
But they're hearing everything else.
But you, you cover this totally.
I miss that board. Uh, well, the board is, uh, uh, solid, we, and we just-
Yeah. I'm like, yeah.
I think we took a lot of-
Yeah, we took in a lot of tricks. You guys are all, yeah, so. How many, I suppose?
So.
On the circle there.
Yes.
We have here. And that's a locker, go after it.
Yes, I can, it's, oh, my, that's okay.
Yeah, well, be sure that stays on.
What are you doing, you?
Oh, it times out, it's out.
Yeah, and then you have to log in.
Uh, what's the time, what do you have, seven, twenty? You know, I understand.
Good afternoon, everybody. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Roll call.
Mayor Gonzalez.
President.
Counselor Dominguez. Counselor Harris. Counselor Ives.
Here.
Counselor Lindell. Counselor Maestas.
Present.
Counselor Rivera.
Here.
Counselor Trujillo. Counselor Villarreal. You do have a quorum, mayor.
Thank you, want to welcome, uh, the city councillors here this afternoon to this special meeting, thank you for taking the time to be here. Uh, also, uh, want to welcome former city councillor Rosemary Romero, who has done a tremendous job, uh, not only serving our city in an elected capacity, but also afterwards in all the work that you've taken up. I know this, uh, this current discussion today on the north central regional transit, uh, district city of Santa Fe consolidation study is something that I know is, that you've worked hard to try and bridge communities and help understand where opportunities might exist, so. We're gonna move on to, uh, item three, approval of the agenda, are there any changes at this time?
Mayor, I have none.
Okay, it's a pleasure to counsel.
Second.
All in favor, signify by a say nay.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, Brian, do you want to go ahead and, um, or?
Mayor, we can let Keith introduce, uh, the, the study and then turn it over to the consultants.
Okay, welcome Keith.
Thank you, good evening, mayor, city councillors, uh, I think you all know me, I'm Keith Wilson with the Transit Division, um, I'm gonna be real brief, cause we've got a lot to get through, uh, this afternoon, but just a, a quick reminder, back in April of twenty sixteen, the city council passed resolution twenty sixteen dash twenty-nine, which, uh, approved moving forward with a study of, uh, potential consolidation between the north central RTD and, uh, the city of Santa Fe Transit Division. The north central RTD received, uh, FTA funding towards the study, uh, the city and the NCRTD split the twenty percent required match for those fundings, and I think it was a hundred and twenty thousand for FTA funds and fifteen thousand each from, from the two entities. A scope of work was developed, uh, city staff and NCRTD staff, uh, reviewed RFPs that came in, and we unanimously chose, uh, the consultants TMD with their, their subs, um, and the study really kicked off last August, and over the last year, the consultant's been working hard to put together the analysis that we're gonna present, uh, this evening, so I'm just gonna leave it at that and sit down, and I'll introduce Rosemary Romero, who's, uh, facilitating this evening.
Good afternoon, mayor, councillors, public, I'm thrilled to be back again for another exciting event here, this is the north central regional transit district city of Santa Fe consolidation merger study, I've talked with all of you at some point in the last, um, year or so, and, um, and board members from the RTD, I'm gonna be very brief, and then I'll turn it over to the team, I'm part of the TMD team as a subconsultant, um, and we are, we are almost to the finish line, and we made a presentation this morning to the RTD board, um, and just to, just to underscore, there's two public meetings that, um, will be held, one following this meeting at the convention center in the O'Keefe Room from six thirty to eight o'clock, um, and it's focused on districts one and two, the one tomorrow night is at the Chavez Center from five thirty to seven thirty, and hopefully we'll get a good turnout there, and I, I anticipate that we will. So the format for this evening is, um, we, we, the, the study's been broken up into a couple of sections, we'll present, um, each section and then stand for Q and A, um, for each of the sections, that seems to go the smoothest and that worked, worked out well, as you all know, as you make a presentation, somebody asks the question that's like on slide eight, uh, forty, so if we can do it by these sections, and then we're gonna come back at the end, and if there's anything that was missed, we'll give you another opportunity to ask questions, um, but it will be done by sections and then open it up to Q and A, and we'll encourage the public to come to the meetings, um, tonight and then tomorrow. All right, did I miss anything? All right, uh, with that, I'll turn it over to the consultant team.
Good afternoon, can you all hear me?
Good.
I think you have to switch the slide to show us. I didn't. Good, thank you very much. Again, good afternoon, my name is Norman Silverman, I'm part of the TMD management team that oversaw this, uh, study of consolidation, good, thank you. And you can see, um, we were joined by Felsberg Hol, uh, Holden U, uh, Ulevig FHU and Rosemary Romero Consulting to form our team, and this study is a, a study of the advantages, disadvantages, constraints, et cetera, opportunities for a contemplated consolidation of north central regional transit district, we call NCRTD, and Santa Fe Trails, which we label SFT, as part of an enlarged regional system. There were four tasks involved, we're now at the completion of task three, um, and today's report is going to talk in detail about the results from task three, by the way, task two and three are on the NCRTD and the city website. Task three in specific had four, actually five elements, financial analysis, physical asset analysis, labor force alternatives, fixed route and paratransit analysis, and finally a summary of the first four, these are the four aspects that we looked at in terms of a consolidation, well, how they would be affected, and what are, what are the issues involved. The project goal was to provide information to our policymakers, to your, the policymakers, most importantly, the study was not a service design study, all existing services are assumed to be unchanged or ori, in orientation or schedule in terms of existing services, we assume that if there were a consolidation on day one, every existing service would be operable. The study's analysis, as I said, of the benefits and associated change in disbenefits, costs, opportunities, savings, if there are any, to support a potential consolidation. In today's presentation, we changed the order from the actual printed task three document, we think we have it in a more user and audience friendly, uh, order, rather than the way it was dictated in the scope of work, it's the same topics, it's just we've changed the order a little bit, and first I'm gonna talk about fixed route analysis and paratransit. Up there you see a map of the NCRTD service area, um, it's a very, very large service area, covering over ten thousand square miles, the lines in blue are the various routes that NCRTD runs, the lines in red are the lo, are the routes that Santa Fe runs in the same map scale. Now, the lines are only lines on a map, they most importantly don't show how frequently or when the routes run, they are simple- They are simply that there is a route path in that orientation. This is a comparable map detailing what's going on in the City of Santa Fe, and you can see that NCRTD doesn't, um, run some operable routes within, that's the blue lines, within the City of Santa Fe. And the Santa Fe service territory, SFT service territory, is only fifty-two square miles, almost fifty-three square miles, when compared to the more than ten thousand square miles for NCRTD. The purpose of this is to show that the two systems are very, very, very different in character at present. The NCRTD system is a large system, covers a large service territory with routes that are not frequent, and they serve specific demands and projected trip demands, whereas the NCRTD, the SFT network is much more of a typical transit network with fixed routes that run on a planned frequency with service throughout the service day, in many cases, six days a week, and in a number of cases, seven days a week. Looking at the NCRTD overview, NCRTD operates a fleet of twenty-four fixed routes and flexed routes and complimentary paratransit service in conformance with federal regulations. Nine of these routes operate within the Santa Fe limits, offering regional connectivity. They don't offer intra-Santa Fe distribution. That is for SFT presently. They, but rather, they offer regional connectivity. Twenty-two of the routes are fare-free, with one premium route operating daily with a fare and one premium route operating with a fare on weekends. The NCRTD service, as I said, is trip-based with limited frequency and what we call span, or the duration, the times that the service runs in the days that it operates, and the trips are relatively long. This is an overview of the SFT network to compare just what we talked about with NCRTD. SFT operates ten fixed routes, two pickup shuttle routes, and associated paratransit in conformance with federal regs. All but two of their oper, routes operate Monday through Saturday, and more than half operate Monday through Sunday, including Sunday, seven days a week. All with scheduled frequency throughout each service day. Consistent with its more urban service territory, SFT provides much frequent service over much more hours of service than the present NCRTD network. On terms of fare, SFT has a fare of one dollar per trip, that's the adult fare, on fixed route service, with appropriate two dollars on eligible paratransit service, and five dollars for senior citizen specialized use of paratransit. The pickup shuttle's a fare-free. This is a list. I'm not going to go through the details, just want to let you know we have it. This is a list of the current routes and where they go to and from on the NCRTD network. Again, we won't belabor the point and talk about the details because that was not the subject of the study. Similarly, and that's the second page that does that as well, and similarly, we have a list of the routes that Santa Fe Trails currently operates, where they go from and to, what their route label is by number, what their frequency is, and what their hours of service are, which I indicated are much more than the current NCRTD package. Now, let's compare how they operate and how, and how, and how they do their maintenance. In terms of NCRTD, there are fifty-three in-service vehicles, that means service that's, the, in-service for passenger use, and eleven non-revenue vehicles. The revenue, the revenue of vehicles vary in size from very small, three-passenger vans, to small buses that can seat forty passengers, but most vehicles are twelve to fourteen passengers in size. Again, the vehicles are smaller than the SFT fleet, and we'll talk about that in a bit, a bit. In terms of fueling, the NCRTD fleet is almost entirely gasoline-fueled, with fueling done off-site. There are two maintenance facilities that are, NCRTD uses, one, the Jim West facility in Espaniola, which handles storage, dispatching, and very, very light-duty maintenance. Then there's a second facility in Taos further north that is capable of storage, dispatching, and some slightly higher level of maintenance, to medium levels. But most importantly, for NCRTD, most medium and heavy-duty maintenance is performed, is outsourced. In the future, they have a hope of expanding, a, a, a plan to expand their Espanola facility and in-source maintenance and have the facility support that. The comparable discussion of SFT, they, in terms of fleet size, they have thirty-four mid-sized buses, eighteen paratransit vehicles, and sixteen non-revenue vehicles. And in terms of fueling, their vehicles are almost all fueled by CNG from the maintenance facility within, essentially located in Santa Fe. In terms of the maintenance facility, the Santa Fe facility, unlike the NCRTD facility, handles most maintenance. With some exceptions in terms of warranty and some unit rebuilds, almost all maintenance is done in-house in Santa Fe. I'd like to talk just a little bit about ridership comparison. NCRTD ridership has grown significantly since its inception in two oh seven and the subsequent consolidations of the Los Valles Transit and the Taos Chili Line. In 2016, their annual ridership was two-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand. You can see the chart there. Comparatively, Santa Fe's ridership is higher because they're more of an urban system, with trip lengths shorter, but their annual peak of passenger usage was slightly over a million in 2014. Unfortunately, since 2014, there's been a decline in ridership, and it's now slightly below a million, at nine-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand for the last annual data that we have. There's been a lot of talk about opportunities that consolidation provide in terms of service integration. There are some opportunities and some constraints, and I'm going to talk to that now if I can. In terms of current service levels, and remember that we're starting with current service levels in terms of an initial consolidation, the two services have a large difference in frequency of service and the duration or span of service. There's also a difference in fare structure. These two factors, right now, day one, precludal and integrated type service because the Santa Fe Trail Service is much less frequent and much longer distance, and has, doesn't charge a fare, whereas the Santa Fe Trail Service is the reverse of that. In terms of future opportunities that a consolidation could afford, if NCRTD were to selectively increase its frequency and span to more closely match some of the SFT services, and if there was a common fare structure, whatever that fare structure would be, from zero to wherever, then there would be an opportunity down the road to look at integrating and saying a bus from Espaniola could, could interface and, and, and split the service interval along one of the streets in, in, uh, in, in Santa Fe, but right now, the services are too disparate to make that customer useful at all. But there are some other opportunities that could happen. S, NCRTD prepared a long-range strategic plan labeled LRSP in 2015 with the assistance of a consultant, in fact, one of the members of our consultant team, FHU. And, um, the, N, NCRTD would like to implement service opportunities, service enhancement opportunities that would make service integration viable. They have a, a goal to do that. It's not funded at this point, but they do have a phased approach and plans to improve service, and that could very much make service integration down the road viable. In addition, consolidation would allow better connections between scheduled local and regional services. Provide the ability to maintain a small group of vehicles, NCRTD current vehicles that are, serve the Santa Fe area, and hopefully maintain them in the SFT facility, which is currently well-subscribed, but we do think that there's an opportunity, particularly on a third shift, that could incrementally help service some of the existing NCRTD vehicles. That has to be studied by an independent study in greater detail, but we think there's some very incremental opportunity which could help for those NCRTD-based services that are in the sou, southern end of their territory. In addition, another element of inter, integration could be the communication of regional-wide schedules on a single information platform. In today's world of information platforms, consolidation would make that possible. What about regular planning efforts? NCRTD utilizes two full-time employees dedicated in part to service planning. They routinely adjust their services in response to changing demands and in response to the resource constraints that they currently have. SFT, on the other hand, does not currently employ a dedicated planner or planning staff. Their network has not changed very much in recent years, and frankly, that could be a factor that's contributing to the ridership decline, the fact that it's not being responsive to changes. Again, the ideal transit situation is where a transit agency, particularly a bus agency, is responsive quickly to changes that need to be made. But Santa Fe Trails has budgeted a comprehensive service evaluation effort to start later this year. It's not related to this study per se. It's an independent study of their system. Again, timely adjustments are important. Consolidation and a resultant larger system would provide a greater impetus for the acquisition of modern scheduling software. That is the use of a technology to more efficiently schedule service, not in terms of what the customer sees, but in terms of how the vehicles and the assign, the driver assignments are made to minimize overall cost. That technology is there. A consolidated system would be more advantageous in using that technology because it works best in a larger system, and the critical mass would then be established to pursue that more aggressively. Unlike fixed route, there are some initial opportunities for paratransit integration because paratransit, unlike fixed route, paratransit is just geography-based. It's not trip-based in terms of a schedule. It's based purely on geography. Both agencies employ a full-time call center systems, application processes, and reservation systems, but they're separate at present, and they're different. As with fixed route service, however, paratransit would require a common paratransit fare. Right now, the fares are different, so if you were looking to provide some sort of efficiency or commonality, you'd have to overcome that issue. With a consolidation, the opportunity exists, but requires reconciliation of the processes for handling service requests and dispatching. That is how reservations for paratransit trips are made and how vehicles are dispatched. In a consolidated mode, that would have to be reconciled to be consistent throughout the system so that there could be an integration opportunity. Any questions on the, that is the first chapter, if you will. Are there questions at this point? I'd be happy to answer any, I'll try to answer them.
Councilor Dominguez.
Madam Mayor, pro tem, I, I actually have a lot of questions.
Oh, well.
But, but some of them, I think, I think I'll wait to the end because I think that they're more on the, I guess, philosophical kind of perspective and not necessarily on some of those details, so. If you don't mind, um, madam mayor, pro tem, I'd like to hold off on questions that I have relative to this, to the larger discussion.
Yeah, I, I think that that would be fine. Let's proceed then, and then we'll, uh, go to questions at the end.
Okay, I, I'll, I'll ask the same thing after each chapter, if you will, and if you still want it, that's fine, too. I'm just giving you the opportunity because sometimes with the length of the presentation, it is rather lengthy, you may forget some of the initial thoughts you might have had, so we just offer that to you.
Let me, let me just, uh, ask, um, from, um, early in the presentation, what would prevent the regional integration opportunities from occurring without consolidation?
Because they're run totally separately. They're different unions, they're different scheduling protocols, they're different fare structures, and the services are different. An NCRTD route might offer three or four trips a day. A Santa Fe route, parallel to it or even overlapping it, might offer service every thirty or fifteen minutes. So they're different, they're different scales, but the fact that they're different labor representation, we're going to talk about labor and set representation, that's the last chapter, present, prevents it from being done in a, a non-consolidated manner. Even consolidated, it's a challenge, but in a non-consolidated manner, it, it doesn't happen.
Councilor.
Yeah, so for instance, on your service integration constraints, you don't list two unions. That's a real constraint.
We're going to talk to that.
Yeah, you just identified it now, but that's a real constraint that I think should have been listed. Uh, changes required for future opportunities, really is one union. Uh, the, the whole new funding, uh, you know, it's, uh, you know, I would encourage you, sir, to move quickly through this. You know, we got, uh, full reports on task two and task three from Mr. Wilson, and we've received the PowerPoint. So this is fairly familiar information to all of us, and I think we're, our time is better served. Just kind of hit the high points, and then we can ask our questions. I don't know, is that fair?
All right, we will talk to the labor issue, I can assure you.
All right, very good.
I, I did want to ask on the, uh, paratransit. Has there been a cost estimate generated for paratransit services, uh, with the, within the NCRTD service territory?
I'm not sure I understand your question. A cost of what they currently do?
Right, and in integrating with the city?
No, we haven't developed what this, we haven't quantified the savings because that's a function of things we'll talk about later on, about finance and about labor rates and labor constraints and things. We'll talk about that if we can, but, uh, again, that, we have not quantified that. That was not, um, something that could be done at this stage, at this preliminary stage.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Rivera?
Follow-up to your, uh, question. The city offers paratransit services right now, and we're pretty busy. How would integration affect, uh, how the city provides paratransit services?
Well, the fact is that you have NCRTD vehicles and city vehicles available in both instances to provide a paratransit cer, trip. You have better, better opportunities, a bigger pool of labor and a bigger pool of available veh, vehicles that would hopefully make the cost a little bit less. That has not been quantified, but that's certainly, um, an opportunity for some, some savings. Not a huge number, but some.
All right, and the cost, you said it would be a savings instead of evening out or balancing out, or?
I said it's a savings. There's a net potential savings.
And how much would that net savings be?
I said we have not quantified that savings because that's a detail well beyond the scope of this preliminary study and would require an understanding of the, and an acceptance of the different wage rates and settling all that in consolidation. When we talk to labor, you'll, you'll understand a little more about that.
Certainly.
Follow-up if I can, um, Councilor Rivera? So I'm a little confused. You s, you haven't quantified it, but you, you're, but you're confident enough to say that there's going to be a saving?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor?
And, and sir, you state that the agency has budgeted, I'm talking about SF, uh, Trails, Santa Fe Trails, has budgeted a comprehensive service evaluation effort to start later this year. Why wouldn't the City of Santa Fe do this first before taking any further steps towards consolidation?
You'd have to ask the City of Santa Fe that question.
Well, I think you're looking at the City of Santa Fe.
I can't, uh, the, the, I can't eff, comment on the timing of the two studies. That was a process which we were not involved with. Okay, fleets are comparable but different in nature, as I said. The sizes of the fleets are different. The fueling is different, and I'll try to go at a faster pace per your request, Mr. Harris. In terms of fleet uniformity, because they serve different markets, in the short-term, fleet uniformity would not be a goal. Longer-term in a consolidation effort, it could indeed be a goal, but it's, it's down the road. In terms of replacement, NCRTD identified about six million in needs on the current system over a ten-year period. SFT has identified a nine-million-dollar need over the same ten-year period in terms of current service levels. The long-range plan from NCRTD identifies approximately ten million dollars for additional fleet purchases to support the service enhancements, uh, for, by 2035. They have a long-range plan. SFT has not identified any fleet expansion through 2035. Maintenance facilities, I mentioned the maintenance facilities earlier. I won't belabor the point. I said what they, uh, did. Capital plan overview. Um, NCRTD's long-range plan is unfunded, but provides significant opportunities for service expansion, and expansion that helps the City of Santa Fe as well. It's not just in the NCRTD northern service territory. Much of their expansion efforts, or programmed expansion efforts, or planned expansion efforts are in Santa Fe. Conversely, SFT has no provisions for growth and has no longer-term service plan expansion that we know of. Also consistent, the Santa Fe capital budget is currently only funded on a one-year basis. Specific grant funding for future years is uncertain in key investment categories. Vehicle technologies, uh, both, both of them have, uh, vehicle locator systems. In a consolidated system, uh, you'd want to marry those two together so that it's one platform. Fare collection is a separate issue. Fare collection is a separate issue, again, in a consolidated mode, it's not a requirement of consolidation, I want to emphasize that, but in a consolidated mode, the opportunities for service integration would be significantly enhanced by having a unified fare structure. And I won't go into the, the details of that at this point unless there's a question. And with that, I will turn it over to my colleague, Tom Del Sorbo, who will talk about the financial side of things, unless you have questions.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good afternoon. Okay, I will honor the request and I will go as quickly as possible and hit on the high points on the financial side. This slide, when we began the financial analysis, is really just an overview of FY 2017 for both agencies. The two important points here, I think, to note are, on the NCRTD side, in that total revenue column of $12.4 million, 7.1 of it is related to GRT receipts from the regional tax that they have. However, 4.6, or about 60% of it, is actually distributed to Atomic City, Railrunner, and a million to Santa Fe Trails. So effectively, it's diminished from the 7.1 by about 60%. Second thing is, just to note on the bottom, that both agencies for '17, NRTD wound up with a balanced budget, and Santa Fe Trails had a small surplus of just about $100,000. Now, on the next slide, we tried to sort of hit upon some key reasons for why the current financial situation exists. So in looking at them, this, on this page, it's really looking at both agencies as separate entities. On the Santa Fe Trails side, SFT, they expect to have, we project that they'll have sufficient operating surpluses to support their service levels through 2022. One of the main reasons for that is the local ordinance that was passed in 2016 guaranteeing transit, a minimum of 89% from the quarter cent levy, has sort of ensured a more sustainable and, and revenue stream for that particular piece of their revenue pie, which is the biggest. On the other hand, the, as I mentioned, the GRT for RTD, $7 million also is generated, however, 60% of it leaves the agency for use elsewhere. The GRT on the NCRTD side, as you know, is scheduled to sunset in 2023, and obviously, given the importance of that as a revenue stream, has to be dealt with accordingly. The other piece of note for NCRTD is the primary method they've been using to balance the budget over the last couple of years is really use of their cash reserves. At the forecasted rate of drawdown, they use most of the cash reserves for capital matches, most of the drawdown, so the drawdown rate, they will be below their 25%, they have a 25% reserve requirement, they'll be below it by 2020, and actually in a deficit position relative to the fund balance by 2023 at the current pace on that. The next two slides really just present the pie charts of the revenues and expenses for both agencies. On the NCRTD side, again, the notable piece is really the net GRT because that's what is reflected in their budget. If that, that number would be 57% of revenues if it was at the full money that comes in without the distribution. On the SFT side, the next slide, two, two points to note is, one, the GRT also accounts for about, over half of their revenues, and another 7%, making it about 61%, is the Santa Fe receipt of the transfer from NCRTD. The other point on the expense side that I'll make, and it is salaries and benefits, it's 53% for Santa Fe Trails. On the previous page, it was 46 for SFT, for NCRTD. That's due primarily to the benefit packages that Santa Fe Trails costs incur relative to NCRTD's benefit packages. So the next slide begins what the study called for in terms of creating a few potential scenarios to essentially establish what level of revenues would it take to support an agency that was consolidated between the two units. And these, these are, these three scenarios represent three of many. There are many permutations you could have here in terms of phasing in of initiatives that have been programmed, timing of revenue streams either being eliminated or coming in, or implementation of economic operating savings over the short and the long term, you know, in administrative areas, transportation, maintenance, et cetera. So Scenario One is effectively the baseline. There's no new revenues, there's no cost savings out of consolidation, it's just basically putting the two agencies together. Scenario Two, and these scenarios were agreed to with SFT and RTD in terms of the costing out for the study. Scenario Two would eliminate the lodger's tax revenue that comes into the Santa Fe side, but there would be a support cost savings as a result of a consolidation based on NCRTD receiving nine positions to absorb work that's currently performed for SFT by other City of Santa Fe departments that don't reside within SFT per se. The third scenario is the largest version of it. Now, these scenarios, in addition for financial stability, were also to be looked at for what level of RTD's long-range strategic plan, what level of initiatives could they fund? The third scenario assumes the assumptions in two, with the lodger's tax and the support savings. It also removes the 1/4th cent SFT MGRT from the equation, but it increases the county-regional from 1/8 today to 1/3 of a cent to generate the necessary revenues for both the strategic initiatives and the offset of the elimination of the revenue stream from the MGRT. So on the next slide, this outlines the assumptions that had to be made for doing scenario, all the scenarios. So Task Two-A provided the, essentially, the revenue and expense data as updated for Task Three. The RTD board reserve requirements of 25% were modified for the sake of this analysis with concurrence by RTD to reflect the larger agency, the pressures of having a 25% reserve on a larger agency in a consolidation. So what we assume was that we would have a 25% reserve through 2020, and then drop it to 20% for '21 through '25, and down to 15% for '26 through '35, which is the last year of the, the analysis covered. We also took a look at what the scenarios in terms of revenues and expenses would mean against the state of New Mexico's Division of Finance and Administration's 8% cash reserve, effectively a one-month cash reserve, as opposed to the 25% that is held by the board at RTD. So let's go to the next slide. So these really represent the outcomes for the three scenarios. In the baseline scenario, which means no new revenues, no cost savings, consolidation only, there's an average annual deficit of $480,000 every year throughout 2035 on average. The consolidated fund balance hits a deficit in 2028 through 2035. There are no, there's no money for any long-range initiatives that were laid out that would benefit Santa Fe riders as well as RTD riders. From a board requirement on the reserve end, it does not meet it in any year of the plan, but it does meet the New Mexico requirement only for the first three years of the plan and then drops below that 8% threshold. The next slide just shows pictorially on a line graph how the reserve balance requirements are met under the respective results in each of the years. Scenario Two, which incorporated the elimination of the lodger's tax as a revenue stream and the consolidation savings I mentioned. Here, the average deficit over the period through 2035 is about $105,000 annually. No additional funding would be available for the long-range initiatives. In the early years, there would be a deficit that would have to require the cash reserves to be tapped to supplement the revenues, to have a balanced budget. The board requirements would be met from 2026 on, but they would fall short up through 2025. But this plan at the state level of 8% would meet it in every one of the years from a cash reserve perspective. Now, the next slide just shows, again, a line graph that shows how Scenario Two fares against the different reserve balance assumptions and requirements, and there pretty much hugs the line well, there's a couple of years where it falls below it. Scenario Three is the largest of the revenue pot. So again, this takes into account the Scenario Two assumptions and then adds in the elimination of the MGRT as a revenue stream in total, and the increase in the regional GRT to 1/3 of a cent to basically offset the revenue removals and fund the full suite of long-range initiatives that are implemented in phases through 2035. They're not all, they wouldn't all come in, it's not even feasible to assume that they can come in, in the first year or two or first few years. The board requirements would be met beginning in 2023. They would not be met through 2022. The state requirements of 8% would be easily met in every year of the plan. The net of this outcome, just based on the assumptions, would be is that the elimination of the GRT and lodger's tax would be $167 million less in revenue, offset by $265 million more by going to 1/3 of a cent in that same period through new revenue on that side. And again, as I said, these revenue, these scenarios can be modified in multi, we could be, there's 100 versions of it, which looks at expenses, looks at revenues, looks at timing, looks at initiatives, et cetera. But these are the three that the scope of the study called for. Now, you could see in Scenario Three, as you get into the later years, the reserve balance goes pretty far way above the, the required levels. So clearly, there's room in the later years to modify accordingly, based on the numbers as they stand today, or implement later. There's, again, a variety of scenarios on that. The last two pages in this section really relate to a couple of points I just want to, we want to get across. A consolidated agency needs certainty of revenue streams. It's, it's vital if you want to support operations but also expand the transit mobility for the entire region. The sunset provision, again, without that, you know, it's really, it's really difficult to even talk about consolidation or even in RTD as a separate agency without the sunset being removed. Of course, there were also other revenue generating things that could be done, which would be, you know, perhaps the state, you know, a lobbying effort at the state level for funding of transit on a regular basis, capping the level of GRT funds that are currently now distributed to the other regional providers. And again, in, in a consolidation, obviously, the $1 million that comes into SFT now would all be part of just the larger organization, and that's how it was treated. In terms of maintenance of operations, both agencies do a good job now containing costs on the expense side. Revenue side tends to be the real variable in this. So we, a preliminary assessment did look at roughly adding nine positions to RTD in a consolidation to offset the work currently done outside of SFT for SFT from other city departments. There are other areas of operating savings that can be done over the longer term. The maintenance facility at SFT, right now, NCRTD outsources the vast majority of all their maintenance work. The capital program side, I don't think it's, it's no secret that the uncertain nature of the federal funding situation, especially in this environment, particularly for longer-term investments, can really impact what you do to replace your assets, what you do to upgrade the system, and even on, in a consolidated arrangement, fund long-term initiatives that have been identified by NCRTD for the greater region. We do think, though, that a consolidated transit operation would provide a much greater rationalization of capital program needs because, number one, you'd have all the heads together looking at, do we need this facility? Do we have enough capacity of this facility? Can we just add to it? There are, there are things that could be looked at collectively that don't lend themselves necessarily individual decisions. The other thing is, is that in a transit environment, together, they would not be competing against other City of Santa Fe departments for capital funding within their own, within their own program on that. The last piece on this section is really the 25% reserve requirement. Clearly, in a larger agency, which this would be if there was consolidation, you have to review the 25% threshold. It's three times the current state level. Something modified to a lower level, and it doesn't necessarily have to be down at 8% where the state is, which is equivalent to one month, would be, would be extremely desirable to not tie the hands of a consolidated agency in terms of having to maintain a certain level of balance. So that ends the finance section. Hopefully, we went through it, hit the high points. Onto labor.
I have some questions. Do you want me to ask them? Thank you, Mayor. I'm on 33, talking about the sunset in 2023, and I'm asking, what's required to remove that sunset?
Legislative process has to be brought to a vote by the, the voters in the four counties. I'm sorry. Yeah, I'll let Peter answer it.
Hi, I'm Peter Dwyer, I think most of you know me, I'm legal counsel to the RTD. We've already initiated the process of removing it. We have an ordinance, two ordinance, sets of ordinances that we have going through. The first one, we hope to present to the city council and, and rather, to the Santa Fe County Commission and to the three other counties within the next few months. Basically, I'm asking them to change dates because right now, that could only be done late in the process, in 2022 thereafter. So we're trying to move the dates forward to potentially have an election on the sunset at the 2018 general election. So that's the first set of ordinances that we hope to get done this fall. A second set of substantive ordinances, actually amending the, the provision that sunsets, it would, we would hope would be on the general election ballot in 2018, in November. However, we want to do advanced work to see what the constituents think and how they feel about that. We want to hire consultants and, and really assess it before we put it out there to a vote. So the earliest case scenario would be 2018. It's very unlikely that we would ever do it at a special election because of the cost. So then it would be either 2020 or 2022 after that, and our board and its strategic planning has decided that it would like to have those three bites at the apple because, of course, if the, if the GRT for the NCRTD were, were to sunset, we would have to dissolve as an organization because that's the majority of our funding.
So also in Scenario Three, we would need an increase from an eighth to a third.
Yeah, in Scenario Three, what we'd really be talking about is, it's, it comes in sixteenths, up to eight sixteenths is allowed under the gross receipts tax laws for regional transit. Right now, it's 1/8, so that's 2 sixteenths, and we would be talking about doing probably five sixteenths. But the five sixteenths scenario would, it would increase regional taxes throughout the four county regions, Santa Fe, Taos, La Salamos, and Rio Riba, and it would generate that additional revenue that they showed you on the screen. It would probably be, it's enough revenue to not only fund our long-term strategic plans, but to cushion the blow to the City of Santa Fe if there was a consolidation. But of course, that all depends very much on the imposition of a new tax, which I'm sure everyone has limited enthusiasm for at this point in time. So that's very much a prospective question for the future. I think the consultants are just presenting to you a broad array of different scenarios so you can see what different things look like. That's not been proposed.
So if, if it didn't pass in any one of the four counties?
No, it's actually a county, it's a region-wide vote, so it would actually pass by majority vote.
So it's a consolidation of the, essentially, it's a consolidation of the four counties?
Right, so 51% of the total 235,000 people would do it, although when the RTD imposed the tax initially, it did the tax initially, it did pass by majority in all four counties, which made things a lot better.
Okay. There, there's been some articles about a nonprofit winning a contract for the Los Alamos. Do we know anything about that?
Yeah, I think I'll turn that over to Tony. He's very familiar. If you don't know Tony Mortolaro, he used to be the county manager in Los Alamos and has tracked these issues.
Sure. And just what impacts that might result on service levels?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. We've looked at that issue in the event that Los Alamos National Laboratories went nonprofit and what the impact would be to our tax collections there. And we've estimated we'd lose about a million dollars a year as a result of that. And keep in mind, if we lose a million dollars, it's going to affect everybody. It's going to affect how much money comes to Santa Fe Trails, how much goes to Railrunner, how much goes to Los Alamos Transit as well because that's part of the pot, and the board would have to look at how it redistributes those, those revenues based upon service needs in the NCRTD. So it's about a million-dollar hit.
I don't know if anyone can speak to this, but how realistic is it that the fleet replacement costs would be covered by 80% from FTA funding?
Mayor, hold on, Mayor. You know, that, that is, is what the current formula is. And in these, this study and everything, they utilize that possible projection. But basically, you have to go on a year-by-year basis because even under the FAST Act right now, there isn't real clarity or long-range commitment to funding transit or even transportation issues throughout the nation. And that's still an issue that's being discussed in Congress. If you look at what the FAST Act is providing to the state of New Mexico over the next five years, it's roughly about an extra million dollars a year. And that's great that there's an increase. But when you look at it and say, well, you know, there's 47 transit agencies in the state of New Mexico, and you gave them all an equal piece of that, what would they get? About $20,000 each. It's not, doesn't go very far. So, most transit agencies use that 80/20 in their planning and in their long-range projections. But, again, you can't, you can't go on it as a given in any one year. It's a competitive process.
I'll yield for notch, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. This may be a question for Mr. Dwyer. This has to do with the transfers out from the, you know, the region-wide GRT. So it's shown as 4.6 million. It's documented in the package that 2.2 of that goes to the Railrunner, about 1,362,000 goes to Atomic City Transit, and 953,000 goes to Santa Fe Trails. How is this, how is this formula determined? How is this split determined? The city of Santa Fe gets a far smaller amount than anybody else.
Well, I've been with the organization forever, and I worked on its founding when I was in Los Alamos. So I know the whole history, but I'm going to try and keep it succinct for you because it's, it's a long history. Fundamentally, what happened was that Santa, the regional transit tax was being proposed at a time that the city of Santa Fe and Santa Fe County also had taxes that they wanted to impose. And there was contentiousness over the subject of whether or not the RTD should go forward with its tax because it was competing with other taxes. As a consequence of that, certain agreements were made. One of the agreements was that a certain portion of the taxes within, one half of all the taxes generated within Santa Fe County go to the Railrunner because the Railrunner was going to impose a competing tax. So that tax was never imposed, but at the price of taking a chunk of the GRT that was for regional transit in Santa Fe County and just direct sending that to Railrunner. And then the other portions of the tax, there were arguments and discussions about how to fairly allocate a regional tax on a regional basis. And it became quite difficult for the board. The board had a lot of troubles at that time. But in the end, there was a, a decision to figure out what was truly regional and to allocate the tax across the regional entities based upon some kind of a fair share process. But it wasn't a direct dollar-for-dollar, this much comes out of Santa Fe County, so that much must go into Santa Fe County, this much comes in from, et cetera, et cetera. So Atomic City and, and Santa Fe Trails both got big allocations as a, as a board process through the NCRTD board is what happened. And so that's been resolved for several years now. Our board is 14 members, four counties, six pueblos and four municipalities. And really, it's been running very quite well. There's, hasn't been a lot of contention since that time about that.
So it's, so, I mean, it's fixed. This is not an annual adjustment. This, this balance, this, this formula is pretty well fixed.
It's set in policy.
For whatever reason.
Tony can tell you about the policy. But yes, it was an established policy.
So, has anybody, so again, if the, under scenario three, which is the only even viable, close to being viable option, scenario in my opinion, but to eliminate the municipal GRT and lodges tax, is noted as 100, approximately 167 million through 2035, and an offset by 265 million through the new GRT revenue, the regional one-third. So, how much of that 265 million is generated by economic activities within the city of Santa Fe?
Tony, what's the present, maybe you can say what the present proportion is?
And I guess I'd like to know, would we end up, of that 265, would we be more or less approximately than 167 million that's anticipated in the current tax structure?
I'll probably, Mayor, council member, I'll probably have to have the consultant speak to that later question. But in terms of GRT tax generation by county, right now, Santa Fe County, the tax in Santa Fe County generates about 4.2 million, 4.3 million dollars out of the 7 million dollars. Los Alamos generates about 1.4. It's been as high as almost $2 million, but with lab spending decreasing, it's dropped quite a bit. Rio Reba County generates about 500 and some thousand, and Taos County generates close to over $900,000 a year.
But again, I guess my, I need to be specific. What I'm most interested in, because this is an ongoing discussion for us, is the county act tax rate versus the city's tax rate, how much is generated by city of Santa Fe activities? We all know that actions are taken fairly recently, and another one's proposed that affects the city's gross receipts tax rate. So within that Santa Fe County number that you cite, how much, do you know how much comes from the city of Santa Fe economic activities versus the county?
Sir, we do not. No, we do not track that. We just track what comes in overall from the county.
All right. I think you see my point. Okay. I'll, I'll yield. I know that others have questions.
Actually, I think I was on the same kind of wavelength, if you will, Counselor Harris. I'm trying to, so when you look at slide number 33, it says that the regional transit provides, including Santa Fe Trails, which receives approximately 1 million. So of that 1 million that the locals receiving from, from the regional, right, how much of that is generated from maybe economic development? Or it doesn't, it just doesn't seem, I'm not quite sure. The ratios don't make sense. We're only receiving 1 million, or is it 4.2 million?
No, you, from the RTD GRT, you're getting about 1 million of the 4.6. The other three sixes, 2-2 Railrunner and about 1-4 AC Transit.
But there's a total revenue of 12.4 into the RCTD.
Well, that includes things like federal grants. And, you know, there's a pie chart, sort of, if we go back to the pie chart, you could see what the different categories are. You know, there is, it's mostly federal operating and capital grants, and some of it, again, is from the cash balance that they're drawing down from.
And so did you consider in any of those scenarios, the federal grants that the city of Santa Fe receives?
They're incorporated in for a consolidated agency based on, Santa Fe Trails provided an estimate of a proposed set of capital projects through 2035. So, for instance, every year of the plan has two buses being replaced, $900,000. So, the Santa Fe Trails capital plan was rolled up. But, you know, again, as Tony said, and as some, as you said at the podium, it's a year-to-year battle to guarantee. There's no guarantees on, you know, 80/20 has been the conventional split for most of the funding, with 20 being the local match. But, you know, if, when you do a scenario, you gotta, you gotta start somewhere in terms of what's your assumption.
So, so again, in all three scenarios, you considered federal grants the city of Santa Fe receives in its revenue? And so, so in one of the scenarios, you talk about losing some lodgers tax?
Yep.
Right?
Starting with scenario two, correct.
Right. But we, we get like a million dollars from the...
That's valued in the study at about 300,000 annually, the lodgers tax.
Okay. So, the, one of the, the other question that I have is really for maybe Peter or anyone else? And this is really a, a play, a little bit of a play on Counselor Lindell's question regarding the sunset and taxing authorities, et cetera. If I'm hearing you correctly, really this, the residents of this city would be at the mercy of other counties, the board, those sorts of, we would be at the mercy of some of these things, these things happening by ordinance at these are the counties?
The city, yes, in the sense that the, the ordinances are passed at the county level, and they have to be identical ordinances from all four counties. So the city wouldn't really be involved in that. It's a, it's a county-wide, really, it's a district-wide election. It would be the 235, 65, whatever it is, thousand people in the north who make a decision for the region. So it is really at that scale. But if you're talking about representation and control, we have weighted voting at the board level so that Counselor Miestis is the mayor pro tem of the, is the chair, vice chair of the, of the board. But he also represents, I believe, six or seven voting units, which is the largest single voting unit for a member. So politically, the board is already controlled largely from, by Santa Fe City and County because of the way, because of demographics.
And what would it take to change that?
You'd have to change what's called the intergovernmental agreement, which you may or may not have seen come through your desk as members get added on. Basically, every member gets one vote for a purpose of being a quorum, and then weighted votes based on the census data for their influence of their vote. So there's, it's, it's kind of a mixed voting scenario. And there's this intergovernmental contract between all 14 entities, which you and the counties and the other cities and the pueblos all sign.
Okay, so that's on that scale or at that level?
Right.
But what about the actual sunset itself?
The sunset itself is a voter decision. They decide, well...
Which voters?
It's the voters in the whole region.
Okay.
And so like I said earlier, it's 51% of everybody in the four counties. We were, we were lucky the first time it came through because it got a majority in each of the four counties. So no county felt like its constituents disagreed with it. But it is conceivable that it wouldn't be that way.
My point is, is that city of Santa Fe residents would be, and I hate to use, you know, the term "at the mercy of," but we would be at the mercy of, of those voters?
Sort of, except that, of course, since you have the largest population, they would probably make the decision, really.
We can look at population and voter turnout?
Right.
It's a favorite subject of mine.
Yeah, I, I think, I mean, I can, I actually have the results from the previous election. I could, I could compile them.
But those are two different things.
Yeah. It just, I don't know how many of the, the voting of the 265,000 are in Santa Fe County, but I'm guessing it's 120 or 130,000. So it's almost half of the votes are coming from here, so.
What is...
Well, the city is not, is not 120 or 130, but it's, but it's of, I'm talking of the total region.
So there's, so my point is, is that there's really a lot of variables that contribute to really determining our own scenario?
Absolutely. I mean, I think the consultants can talk to you about the, the other variables that are in play for both you and us alike. You've already identified some of them, such as the fluctuation in GRT. I know you have that issue. We do too. The taxability of the lab, the availability of federal funds to pay for both of our capital programs at an 80/20 rate. Those are all day-to-day, year-to-year variables that we have to live with. As far as the, the GRT itself goes, we first, our board strategic plan is to first confront and address the sunset issue. That was never put to a vote by the voters. It was just something that was included in the language of the ordinances at the request of the bodies at the time. Because, keep in mind that when the tax was passed, the NCRTD was like a four or five-person operation. And so there was no proven track record to demonstrate to the taxpayers that it would actually result in some good use of their tax dollars. Now we have a track record. I think it's a good one and a history. And, and I think the, you know, probably we'll be able to persuade the voters that we provide an essential service and that we'll continue to exist. But really, that is up to them. And they could, we could be phased out.
I want to follow up on, on the question that you were asking. I, I didn't quite get this. Rio Reba generates 500,000. Where, where does that revenue come from? Tony was, Taos is at about 900,000. Santa Fe was at 4.2 million?
Counselor, could you repeat your question, please?
Well, it's really the question that Counselor Harris asked, but I didn't get all the information that you were, what did that?
Those are the yearly tax receipts we receive from those counties. So that's what comes in from, that's collected, paid to DFA, and, and then that's what's transferred to our district from each of those counties.
And that's separate from the... Let me see here. That's separate from the one-eighth, right?
That is our, our one-eighth GRT. That's what it generates from each of those.
But it, but it says 60% of these receipts are distributed to other regional transit providers, including Santa Fe Trails, which receives approximately 1 million.
So, out of the 7 million-plus that we collect annually, 4.6 million of it goes to those three entities. It's about 60% of the tax. That, the revenues that we receive goes out for what we call regional services. And the only services that, for example, Santa Fe Trails or Los Alamos County can fund with that money is those that are deemed to be regional in nature. So that's why when you pass your, your resolution that comes to the RTD board, you have specific routes that indicate where you're utilizing those funds because those routes were deemed to be regional in nature. It meets the definition that we all agreed to in terms of what could be eligible for that funding.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not, I don't know if it was you that said it or somebody else that, if any of the four counties did not agree to sunset, then the NCRTD would cease to exist. But then I heard a regional...
No, it's a Peter issue. It's not if any of the four counties didn't agree. Let me go back and try and say what our strategic plan is. We have a board, consists of you and others, and they set a strategic plan for how to deal with this. We're in the process of executing that. We've been doing it for about nine months now, I'd say. And we're, we're still working with the counties on it right now. And the plan is to allow an election to remove the sunset three times. So we'll have a shot in 2018, 2020, and 2022. If, if after three strikes, we're out, keep in mind that we've already merged with Taos, so we run the Taos Chili Line. We've already merged with Espanola, so we run the Espanola system. Then there's going to have to be some kind of provision made for reallocation of the resources that the NCRTD presently has to resume local operations. It would go back to local operation at some level, and all the regional services would cease to exist. I'm optimistic that's not going to happen, but it does require work on our part as a staff to go forward in 2018, educate the public as to... staff to go forward in 2018, educate the public as to do you, do you like this service? Do you want to retain it or not? And then see if, add an election either in 2018, 2020, or 2022, if they will keep this tax in place. Now, please keep in mind, I do want to be clear, you are beneficiaries of that tax. That tax is, when we talk about giving money to Santa Fe Trails, that's just a straight cash transfer from us that Keith uses for his operational money. So, if that tax goes away, it's really bad for you as well, because right now, it's 1/12 of your operating costs. So, so, we're all, you know, we're pretty optimistic that everybody's going to want to keep that tax in place, and it's not asking for a new tax, it's just simply asking to remove a sunset provision. But I, I do want to make sure that you understand, we provide other services to Santa Fe County and Santa Fe City beyond the, the cash transfer. The cash transfer was the broker deal, but we're a regional transit district. We provide service all the way to Edgewood, and we get people in from, out of town into Santa Fe. We do services for special events here, all kinds of things in Santa Fe. So, there's more to it than just the cash transfer.
If Los Alamos decided to privatize, then they wouldn't be included in the mix? They wouldn't be included in the vote?
Oh, yeah, they'd, they'd be included in the vote and in the mix. They, they, they're just one of the four counties. They have to, they have to impose the same taxes as everybody else, or, or remove the sunset on the same taxes as everybody else. And we've met with your city attorney, your city manager, we've met with each of the counties. We've met with everybody to try to, you know, let them know what our plan is so we don't interfere with other people, because we're aware of the other tax issues that are out there. Tony does annual updates to each of our members, including you, so I think we've been kind of open about what our, what our plans and our process are. But it remains to be seen. It is a risk. There's a politi, there's a risk that, you know, this, the, that the voters in the district as a whole will not want to continue the blue bus service, and if that's what they want, that's what would happen.
Assuming we were to integrate, clearly, we would be contributing a significant amount of money then to the NCRTD. Would our mix in the makeup of the board change at all?
Probably not. I, but that would be an issue not for me, but for our board. I, I assume that coming out of this meeting, we're really asking you to do what you're doing now, which is ask questions, see whether it's even something that's viable, that you would even consider. And then those kinds of hard issues about, okay, well, what would it mean? What would it look like if we went forward? The consultant, I think, has said a couple of times, they're not getting to that level of detail of, okay, here's a consolidation plan with every level of detail for you. What we would like to know at this point is, what would be the, the issues? What would be the problems? Is it worth pursuing? So, I don't know if it's worth pursuing. I don't know what our board's going to say. They met this morning. You got some kind of tenor or, or a feel from them, and perhaps Counselor Mestes can share his perspective on that, because he was at the meeting. But they're not going to decide until October what they were going to recommend, and of course, it's entirely contingent on what you recommend, and I imagine our staffs will have to put together packets and materials after we hear from the public tonight and tomorrow night what they think, making some kind of recommendation, it's worth pursuing, it's not worth pursuing at all, here's how you could save some money, there's no money to be saved. I, I don't know what that will be. We're not there yet.
Well, I think a lot of my decision would hinge on what the makeup of the board would look like and what our mix would be, I guess, in the voting power in that board. I heard that, you know, there was a, there may be a plan to convert the buses so that they're all the same. Does that, will that take into effect the fact that Santa Fe is trying to reduce its carbon footprint? And would that factor into, or is NCRTD then in charge and would make up their mind or make a decision based on really whatever they wanted to do?
I think I addressed that issue in my presentation. I said in the, on the short term, the near term, the likelihood of fleet uniformity is not there, because the markets are very different. The cost of changing fuel systems for NCRTD to match the CNG investment in SFT would be extreme. And also, propulsion technology is changing. Electric propulsion is becoming more and more of a possibility in the next eight years, 10-year period. We're saying that fleet uniformity is not a short-term goal of consolidation. Okay?
Do they look at it long-term?
It could be. It's, it's something to look at. It depends on what happens with propulsion. It may be that CNG isn't the way to go down the road longer term. It's possible. It may be that it is, but right now, the hybrid electric is another option. Straight, straight diesel propulsion or gasoline propulsion is also an option. That needs to, but in the near term, that's not an issue that should be on the table for a potential consolidation.
Who would have the authority to make the final decision?
Mayor, Counselor Rivera, the RTD does have a sustainability plan and what have you, and within that plan, we're looking at CNG and LPG as alternate fuel systems, again, in terms of reducing our carbon footprint and becoming carbon-neutral to the extent we can. So, we're evaluating those right now, but one of the long-term things we do also want to look at is electric propulsion, what have you. So, as the consultant has indicated, we're not likely to be making a wholesale change in our fleet and how it's powered in the near-term future, but it's under consideration, but it's going to take some time, because there's places we can't get CNG. We go to Chama, we service Chama, Dulce. We can't get CNG up there, what have you. We could probably do LPG, Taos, so it just depends. Our, our service area is so expansive that it limits the type of fuel we can use in some of our vehicles, and our routes are so long, and some of these vehicles have limited mileage in terms of how much miles they can travel on a single tank full of fuel of, of a certain variety.
Okay. And then I think I read in there that there is no fare box, I think, for most of the RTD, but there is fare box in, in Santa Fe. So, would that continue, or would that change?
I'll let the consultants handle that.
Okay. What we're saying is that if you want to optimize service consolidate, service integration, excuse me, having a common fare is a goal, would be a goal. It's not a requirement of consolidation. It would be, it would be important if you want to get maximum efficiency and enhanced service down the road. To do that on the NCRTD side would require their implementation of a modern fare collection system, which they presently do not have. In the presentation, there is an estimated cost for that. That too could be, the initial capital cost could be covered by federal funding. It's a very normal eligible item in federal funding in the past, but it's not a significant revenue enhancer. It's more for consistent policy so that the two organizations can merge their, their resources and get efficiency as they grow and expand in the future.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we're getting to go to Counselor Mestes. Just also want to report some, some really tough news coming over my Twitter feed that the, there are multiple shootings at the Clovis Library with fatalities being reported right now, so we can keep our thoughts and prayers with the people of Clovis as they make their way through tonight, trying to understand what happened in that library. Counselor Mestes?
Mayor, I, I guess I have comments and questions, but maybe we ought to let them get through labor force the last part of the presentation, and then if I may, make my comments and questions in.
Hold on. Okay. So, we'll go through labor force, hit, hit on the high points. NCRTD operating employees are represented by the Teamsters, Local 42. Their contract has about two years left, June 30th of 2019. Their contract is a transit-specific contract, so it, the contract provisions specifically relate to employees in those type of transit titles only. Their wage increases just went up by 2.7 this past July 1st, and in the last year of the contract, another 2.7 for July 18. AFSMI represents the operating employees here at SFT. That contract has expired at the end of June of this year, and negotiations are in progress. This is part of, SFT is part of an overall city municipal contract, so there are many other titles that don't relate to transit that are part of the contract. And the contract that expired included a 50 cent an hour increase in 2014 and nothing for 15 and 16. So, some key differences quickly that exist between the labor contracts. The SFT employees are, their contract is within the citywide municipal contract, whereas NCRTD does have it laid out for specific transit-related provisions. When you look at pay levels within the existing ranges that are out there, NCRTD is slightly higher at the entry level for jobs, but SFT rates are higher at the midpoint and the maximum levels. Most SFT employees are not at the top of the range, but they, you know, they may cluster more around the midpoint. The grievance process, as an example, is two steps within NCRTD and four steps within SFT. Maintenance, as you know, is in-house here for the most part, but is basically outsourced at NCRTD. And in terms of pension contributions, the employees at SFT have a lower contribution than in RTD. So, that, you know, these, these are issues that are out there, and we'll get into them in the next slide after this. Now, we learned during the latter stages of the study that labor attorneys, which included Peter and the city of Santa Fe, determined that the current labor law for New Mexico prohibits two separate unions from representing employees that have the same job function. Effectively, only one union can be the exclusive bargaining agent for a given title within a consolidated agency, such as what might be proposed here, which would mean that there would, in a consolidation, it would lead to current SFT employees transitioning to representation within the RTD union environment. Now, labor considerations are always a very important component of any consolidation. And, you know, just to sort of point out some of the things that will have to be dealt with in terms of negotiation down the road if there is to be a consolidation is pay rates for the same job functions, current health plan and pension contributions, grievance procedures, very important determination of seniority for represented employees. Any SFT employees in a consolidation that would move over to a regional agency, they have accrued vacation and sick leave balances. There's a cost associated with that. When they separate, they're paid a certain amount based on the policies of the agency. That cost would have to be considered in the context of any consolidation arrangement. And down the road, the ability to use the labor forces interchangeably is a longer-term issue. It's not a day-one, it's not a day 365 or 366 issue, but it can present savings down the road in a consolidation with the ability to use employees interchangeably across the same function. So, the last two pages in this section really represent a potential management structure for a consolidated organization with the executive director running the show, labor council, four direct reports, really, the big pieces, obviously, fixed route operations and paratransit, those are the two big pieces. The more support side of the house would be finance administration. You know, and the important thing here would be is that all current employees in the drivers, in the operating ranks from NCRTD as well as FFT, they would effectively be under a single management structure and combined under boxes for more effective management control. Now, that doesn't mean necessarily that they're doing each other's work, but they would basically be managed by the same single operation. The last page just represents a sort of flavor of what the key kind of functions in a consolidation would have to be emphasized. It also represents sort of today what SFT departments are performing in some ways for, what city of Santa Fe departments are performing for SFT. But clearly, you know, the HR area, payroll, procurement, contracts, service planning, and maintenance in terms of facilities and IT-type issues, these are all relevant, these are all relevant consolidation issues that will be much larger when the work, in, in a consolidated workload situation. So, there is one more slide, next steps, but I'll stop right here and take any questions on labor, if there are any.
On labor itself? Okay. Do you want to keep moving, Counselor Mestes?
Yeah. Thanks, Mayor. I, I am the city-appointed representative on the RTD board, and I think we all should take pride in, in agreeing to do this study. I think whenever there's a service provider that focuses solely on a certain service that's operating around the city but not within the city, I think it behooves us to see if there's any merits and efficiencies and benefits to consolidation. So, with that being said, I, this is the second time I've heard the, the presentation, and I've learned a little bit more since this morning. So, so I guess my first comment is, is perhaps we should have had a, a status quo scenario. That way, I think the governing body can see the true condition of the, of the RTD. As you stated earlier, and I think it's documented in here, the RTD is burning through its reserve, and it's anticipated to go into deficit in 2023, independent of a consolidation. So, does that mean that a higher GRT is inevitable with or without consolidation?
It's possible. It's one option. There are, you know, there are other revenue options that could be looked at. It's hard to see how they can close that deficit on the expense side, so there would have to be some revenue streams that come in, whether it be a GRT or something different. You know, again, there could be, and, you know, I'm not as familiar with the legal issues, but there could be a revisiting of those allocations to the other transit providers as one step, because effectively, that's, that's a significant chunk of, of their gross receipts that come in, not their net receipts. But the, probably the leading candidate would be a GRT increase if, in fact, it's a stable situation, everything, all, all things are equal to where they are today. I mean, you would certainly not have any ability to fund any of the longer-range strategic initiatives under that. What you would be doing is coming up above water again.
Okay, in, on slide 42, I mean, obviously, I agree with Counselor Harris. Scenario three is the only one that I'm interested in, because I think one of the ulterior motives that I had in sponsoring this whole effort, the resolution, was that we could potentially rededicate those revenues that currently go to public transit, the lodgers tax, the, the gross receipts tax. And so, that was, I think, one of my underlying objectives from this, and, and that was my hope, is that, that subsidy would no longer be required under a consolidation scenario. But in, in, on slide 42, and I made this comment earlier, the current RTD gross receipts tax sunsets in 2023. A previous version of this study recommended for scenario three that, that it should, that a higher GRT should be effective in 2021. Now, this, this slide presentation says it should take effect by FY 2019. However, we just previously heard that that's not workable. 2018, it's not going to be a special election. It's likely going to be in the 2020 or 2022 election. So, so this, this recommendation's not workable from an election timing standpoint. I don't know if the financial analysis is so critical that to prevent insolvency without a higher GRT, if that, was that the reason why the higher GRT was recommended?
It was actually bundling three things, just in terms of that scenario, was bundling a consolidation in that time period with the elimination of the MGRT in the city and the increase to offset that. Now, obviously, timing, you know, if timing is later than that, it just shifts some of the assumptions to the right, i.e. going towards 2035, and that, and, you know, at some point, you make, you make a projection based on what you think might be relevant. We were looking in scenario three, one of the objectives we were at, tasked with, which was really fund the long-range initiatives in addition to, you know, any kind of solvency issue that's out there too. And that was the level that would accomplish it. Obviously, if we deferred it, you just put off the phasing of those initiatives, and, you know, the timing of it just shifts.
Okay. One thing that I think's important for, for me to point out is that in scenario three, scenario three fully funds the RTD's long-range plan initiatives. It's $100 million of long-range plan recommendations. However, Santa Fe Transit, we only have a 10-year capital plan at 10 million, but we have not identified any needs beyond, apparently, beyond 10 years, and that's why I wanted to, maybe Keith, is Keith here? If Keith can come up, can you come up and maybe just clarify why we don't have a longer-range plan beyond 10 years? That way, that could temper kind of the revenue projections on scenario three, because it looks like it's a total windfall if you look at that curve after 2025, 2026. So, why, why don't we have a long-range? So why don't we have a long-range plan beyond 10 years?
I've only been there a year. Counselor Miestas, I think the 10-year projection was talking about our capital needs. So as part, in the latter stages of the study, we sat down and we just kind of scoped out what our, what we thought, based on what we know now, what our capital needs were through 2035. The $10 million is just the first 10 years, basically, $900,000 a year for bus replacements. I think the other thing that you may be thinking about is, as we stand right now, we don't have any plan for service changes or service expansion into the future. That's something that through, the NPO did a transit master plan a couple of years ago. They came up with some recommendations, short, medium, long-term recommendations. They're just in that plan right now, but part of, at least my thought process when I came into transit was there was already $100,000 programmed last fiscal year to do this study, to, you know, to take the next steps of looking at our system comprehensively and see how we can improve it. That didn't happen last year because of, you know, the transitions that were going on. We've got it in our budget this year, so that's what we're, we're working towards, having a longer-range plan, something similar to the NCRTD has now, where we can lay out how we can improve the system, expand the system in the future, and come up with the, you know, the fiscal projections. But I think the 10-year thing was just basically the next 10 years of our capital, what we expect to spend on capital, not just, but there's no expansion in those numbers.
Is that based on our ridership projections? Because apparently, we've topped out, but there's no potential for our ridership to...
Well, it's based on that we haven't actually done the detailed analysis to see what expansion, if any, is warranted. It was just basically going, we have 34 buses, we know we have, you know, they're 12-year buses typically, you know, every two years, we need to be on a schedule of replacing those. Same with the paratransit vehicles. So basically, it was reasonably simplistic, but based on, you know, what we know right now for our capital needs going forward into the future.
Thanks, Keith. So I guess what I'm saying is we, I think we need to really identify our needs at least up to 2035 that coincides with what the RTD has identified and would fund under scenario three to the tune of $100 million. So anyway, we can talk about other issues. I do want to state on the governance side, this stint study governance, but hopefully, my, my expectation would be under a consolidation that we would have, we would still have a transit advisory board. That way, our constituents can approach, like the TAB, and if they have any concerns with service, they can make, you know, they can be heard and they can be considered. There could be a direct link to the board from a transit advisory board. So I think there's some mechanisms we can have to ensure that there still is redundant mechanisms for local feedback and, and changes that our public wants, even if it's, you know, under an RTD-type consolidation. I'm going to yield the floor, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. I have just a couple of quick questions. One, I just want to begin by saying thank you to both organizations. I think the professionalism level of service, given resources, is something that we can be, both be thankful for. It's nice to be in this position where both organizations are doing at least somewhat well, where we're able to have this conversation. I understand the importance of a study to determine whether there's smarter, more effective, more efficient ways of delivering on the service. I guess my question is, in the transit environment, how do we assess what the needs are of the actual folks that are dependent on the service? So I know that RTD plays a large role in connecting communities, people with job, the job opportunities in Santa Fe and vice versa up north. I know in our city, we struggle a lot with transit routes to make sure that the routes that are in place are, are being utilized and serving a need that exists, either connecting people to work, to healthcare, or to some type of need that exists in the household that it's done as conveniently as possible. So how do we make sure in this quest to think about this as being smarter, better, more efficient, that we make sure that our eye is constantly on the ball when it comes to public transit, serving a true service or a need for those who can't afford regular transportation or need to rely on a public transportation system that's reliable and affordable, that can actually connect them to, to various activities in life? Is that, where does this, where does that assessment fit into, into this study?
Mayor, I can only speak for the RTD and share with you what we have done over the years to answer the questions that you were pondering there. We do a short-range service plan update, and basically, and it looks out five years only. And in doing that, and we updated it in 2014, in undertaking that effort, we hired consultants to do the work. But we ended up having 16 public meetings throughout our service area and going directly to the constituency in those areas and asking them specifically, what are your needs? What, you know, what would it take for you to utilize the system if it came out here? How often would you utilize it and what have you? We also do surveys of our constituents and ask them about their service needs as well. And then the consultant factors that in and looks at that in the context of the services we're currently providing, makes a recommendation regarding what type of service adjustments are needed to meet the needs of our constituents on specific routes. We also ask, we've asked Santa Fe County what they believe the needs are for their constituencies, and they've submitted that annually when they give us their requested service plan updates. And so we go out and ask those questions, basically, and then the consultants work that into either the current services and make, and suggest adjustments. And if the funding isn't available to address those, we put it in this short-range service plan, and our board expects that over the years, we'll work towards putting those services in place. Likewise, we review our services every year. We'll be going to our board here in September with our review of our routes. We look at it every year, what adjustments need to be made and why. In some cases, we've reduced services because there's no ridership. And what we do is we take those funds and reallocate them towards those services where ridership is growing, where demands or there's increased need for those. So we're flexible in terms of how we address those needs and consider new demands for services as well. Good example is our Chama route. It was a two-day-a-week service, and ridership was growing. It went to three days. Now it's five days a week, and ridership has grown. So there's examples of that in our service area. I'm not sure what Santa Fe does.
We don't need to go too much further into that. I guess my point would be, through this process, at least part of the consideration I would, or as part of my consideration, I believe there has to be a parallel or almost a, a service-level assessment done in front of this so that we make sure that even while we're pursuing better, more efficient, smarter strategies, that we understand what service we're trying to meet out there. And it may result in something that's actually maybe more costly. But, but right now, it seems, at least at this point, there's really good studies that are faced on developing permanent revenue streams, making sure that we're managing labor contracts, that they're, the existing service routes aren't affected. A lot of that good analysis is in here, but I, but I think what I was looking through here a little bit was more of the 16 commute member or the 16 public carings that may have been held. I think going into the community, understanding where we're wanting to grow some of our employment needs, knowing that we do rely, our service industry relies on many people who live outside of Santa Fe because they can't afford to live here. Those are all areas that I would like to see as part of this consideration so that we make decisions that are in alignment with both the needs of the, well, primarily with the needs of the, of the citizen in terms of how they can use public transportation to more efficiently navigate a geography that is 10,000 square miles. If you think of Chama to Santa Fe, we're a region, many people in the northern part of the state depend on services that Santa Fe are providing. We depend on many people from the northern part of the region to be part of our workforce. And so seeing some of that and understanding it and how we align to those needs, something that I think that would be helpful for me as part of this type of review. And I don't know if there's room to expand in this, or if there's even, those are slippery slopes, but making decisions absent of that, just thinking that on an annual basis, we'll figure out what our service needs are after we consolidate or after we find the most efficient. I don't know that that necessarily makes the most sense to me, at least in the seat that I, that I sit in.
Mayor, you make a good point, and I know the city has $100,000 set aside for a service area study, but that's specific to Santa Fe. We're going to be updating our service plan in fiscal year 2019. I mean, perhaps there's an opportunity here to, to put our resources together and take a larger look at it from a broader service area. So I put that on the table.
I'll be going to Counselor Harrison and Counselor Dominguez.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I think what you just said, Mayor, was you had to step away early on was a point that I made when the consultant was giving their presentation. I felt like the comprehensive service evaluation, which is underway in budget, as we heard, for our particular needs is, is what I feel should come first. I had a couple of questions for, for Mr. Wilson, and this has to do a follow-up with, with Counselor Miestas and really talking about capital requirements. So we know, and Counselor Miestas agreed with myself, that scenario three is the only one that makes, you know, really any sense. It'd be the one we would have to talk about and one I think we've talked about most, most thoroughly. And it's the, among other things, it's the only one that funds the long-range strategic plan that RTD has in place, is, because as you know, we don't have, you know, we don't go that far out. And what you spoke to was capital needs for equipment. But I just wanted to confirm that Southside Transit Center is designed and construction is funded? Is that correct?
We're, we're in the process of finalizing the, the design for Southside. The majority of Southside, we're still waiting on finalized cost estimates, but the vast majority of Southside is all funding is in place.
We have a certain amount of budget for that.
Correct.
Downtown Transit Center, where do we stand on that?
The funding is available, is there.
Funding's available for that. And so for our CMP facility, I know we're doing an upgrade, but, but you've described what I would think of as an enterprise solution to get that work done.
The CNG facility, actually, we've received, tomorrow's the deadline for the RFP submittals, but essentially, we're hoping, the, the RFP was structured so that we wouldn't have upfront capital costs. We'd pay them back based on our usage of the fuel.
Right, so an enterprise solution. So those three elements, those three projects, to my way of thinking, really identify much of what a long-range strategic plan would have to incorporate it, really, two major transit centers, the first step to upgrade our CNG facility. And those are identified and, and designed and funded to a certain level. We haven't gotten busy yet. I just wanted confirmation on that. And then I just really have one closing comment to make, and this is, this is, would be for the, the consultants, because I want to read a sentence, thanks, Mr. Wilson. I want to read a sentence that really is in the first paragraph of Task 3A, which is the financial analysis of consolidated options, when it says, "The most likely critical consideration in the evaluation of the decision to consolidate will be the ability for these currently independent transit agencies to have a financially sustainable environment over the short and long term." I thought that was a great statement, and I took that statement as I went through the whole packet, and I've been through it a couple of times now. And I've come to the conclusion, at least right now, it's not appropriate to even take the next steps towards consolidate. I believe that we have other work to do. I believe that, from what I understand, that right now, we're, the, the Santa Fe Trails is financially sustainable, both short and long term. I appreciate the difficulties that are ahead for RTD, and I'm sure they're going to be working hard to address those. We heard that from Mr. Dwyer and others. But, but really, this is a sentence that I focused on, and as I went through it, the answer I gave to myself was what I just said. I just don't think it's, this is the time to do it now. Thank you. That's all I have to say, Mayor. Thank you.
Counselor Dominguez.
Thank you, Mayor. I have to, first of all, apologize. Some of the questions that I asked were regarding the current financial overview in Slide 33 and kind of the $1 million and the one day cent from the county. And I guess the real question is the, what is the, the remaining, what does the 2.8 go to? Does it go to overhead? What does that, what does that go to? So there's a, because one of the things that's kind of coming up, and we haven't really talked a lot about, is the rail runner. And I know that there's a, I think, a balloon payment coming up with that, and so I wanted to understand that a little bit more, and I apologize because I got confused with some of the, the way it was worded in that, in that particular bullet.
Mayor, Counselor Dominguez. The, the rail runner, the state of New Mexico has a responsibility for the debt service on the rail runner. Okay, so the real metro RTD operates it, basically, but the debt service and what have you, that is all state and New Mexico responsibility. In terms of the remaining funds, remember, we provide services in all four counties, including Santa Fe County. So any funds that remain after that $4.6 million is paid out, goes to fund all those services directly. And if you were to...
But that, when you say services, that, what does that mean?
That means like the route to Alborado.
Drivers.
Route to Madrid, our 599 route, our turquoise route. I can go on and on and on in terms of those routes that are specific to Santa Fe County, Mountain Trail, La Senega, what have you.
Does it also pay for routes in the region, Taos, Rio Reba?
The, basically, if you look at it on a county-by-county basis...
But I'm not looking, I'm looking at it...
No, I, I know what you're talking about, but basically, the, the counties whose revenues really don't pay for the services they receive is Rio Reba. They get a, probably a threefold increase. But keep in mind, there's also federal money that comes into this whole revenue picture in providing services as well. And I don't want to forget this, I want to make this point, and that is, Los Alamos County continues to make a contribution to the RTD. They initially were making contributions equal to $1.1 million a year. Obviously, after five years, that went down. They still contribute $350,000 to the RTD for services. And one other thing I want to correct, because it's been said here, and that is, we are not in an economic deficit position, the RTD.
So I'm not, I'm not really looking for commentary, so I don't know if it's specific to the question that I asked.
That's fine, I'm done with my presentation.
Okay, thank you. And I don't, and I don't mean to, to be crass if anyone sees it that way, but there's other people who want to speak. Let me just, first of all, thank staff and everyone who was involved in putting this study together. I think that the RTD is a fine organization. I think that they have a fine staff, and I think that everyone really works hard to provide those services to, to people, to human beings. So, you know, I just wanted to just make that comment, and really, the concerns that I had when this first came up still exist. One of them was governance, really, and it's something that I asked for back then when the resolution got approved. You know, what does the governance look like? What are some of the options that we have? So much of what happens or could happen, or however many scenarios you want to come up with, really depend on, on governance. You know, how much of the reserve is the board going to mandate, removal of the sunset, increasing the portion of the GRT, whatever the case may be, so much of that is governance. And I didn't really see a lot in this about, about governance. And the one thing that I really didn't see, and, and I mean, it was articulated in the very beginning of the presentation about services, and that this wasn't a, a service design study. And so much of what shakes out at that level could really sway what voters decide to do, you know, in the other parts of the... you know, in the other parts of the state. It could sway the outcome of the sunset. There's just a lot of variables that contribute to that. We may indicate that somehow, really, if you want to be a one-stop shop and really provide that level of service that residents in the city of Santa Fe want, may sway kind of what other voters and other, in the region, really have to say about that. And so we really didn't have a discussion about those services. And I guess the last thing really is, I feel the same way about, or I guess the same way as Counselor Harris. I'm not necessarily inclined to have city staff continue to work on something that I don't know really benefits the city of Santa Fe. I think that this is something that could benefit the NCR TD, but I don't know if it really is something that would benefit the city's transit system. You know, maybe Scenario Three, we'd have to look at that even a lot more closer. And so I still have the same reservations that I have, that I had back then. Governance, level of service. And really, the third thing is really how we see transportation. Is this community going to see transportation as an essential service? And if so, then, you know, what does that mean? Because the reality is, is that people depend on transportation to get to work, as the mayor kind of alluded to, that workforce. It should be, you know, do we want to see it as essential as every other department that we have here in the city of Santa Fe, like the police department? Whatever the case may be, I don't want to necessarily look at one department versus the other. But the reality is, is that people are depending on transit to get to their doctor's offices, to get to school. And so really, how this community sees transit is kind of the question. And I think that from our perspective, the city of Santa Fe should work at getting its transit level of service right before we even start talking about regionalization. I'll leave it as simple as that. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Rivera?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I also agree with Counselor Harrison. I agree with Counselor Dominguez that one of my main concerns was governance, the other was really the employee transition. And after reading this, that seems to be muddier than I had thought it would, would have been. I had one question that I hope Nick or Keith can answer about labor considerations for potential consolidation with current pension health plan contributions. The money, then, that our employees currently have, not the money, but the leave, the balances, all that, that equals to some monetary amount. Do we know how much that is and how much would then be transferred to the RTD if we were to consolidate?
Counselor Rivera, we did a quick calculation a couple of days ago based on a snapshot of balances for all 123 employees, and it came out roughly about $750,000.
That the city would have to transfer a little bit of that?
That's, I guess, the liability of all leave balances of all staff in the transit division.
Okay. Now, it seems like our pay rates are considerably higher at the midpoint and max point. I can't help but think that some of our employees that we currently have that have been representing this city well for many, many years would then go over and have to become part of the Teamsters Local 42 and potentially take cuts in pay. Is that a fair assessment? Or is that too early to tell?
There's absolutely no provision for any cut in pay. What was assumed is effectively the salary structure that exists today, and, you know, over when you do a projection, you inflate it over time. So there's no, it was a consideration that needed to be pointed out because of the differences. It's definitely clearly going to be a negotiating point. Our experience in past negotiations are, is that, you know, the tendency is for one side to look for the better portion of the other side kind of situation, but there's no pay cut in any of this analysis.
All right. So then, as a past union president, then I assume the Teamsters Local would then try to negotiate up to the higher wages of what would be coming over from the city?
There are so many variable provisions that could be negotiated in these things, it's hard to say what would be, you know, the priorities of all sides.
All right. Nick or Brian, Keith, I don't know who wants to answer this, was, is there any language in the current union contract? I know there was in the fire contract that prohibited privatization or really looking outside of the current bargain unit to provide these services. Is there anything like that in this ASME contract?
Mayor Protem, Counselor Rivera, I'm not aware of any specific language. I'm not sure, I'm looking at Nick, because I know Nick sits on the negotiating team, and I'm not sure if anything came up here recently, but I'm not aware of any specific language that I can look into it.
Mayor Protem, Counselor, yeah, there is language about privatization, so, but in this case, I don't know how that would play out. Wouldn't be privatization, it would be the employees being shifted to a new organization.
Right, okay. Nick, will you stay up there just one minute? I'm going to put you on the spot, so if you don't want to answer this, that's fine. But in your opinion, would consolidation, or would it be something that the city should proceed with? I mean, is it something that's a benefit to the city? Or, like Counselor Harris, are we in good position and probably should stay where we're at? And like I said, I'm putting you on the spot, so if you don't want to answer, feel free not to.
Counselor, I think that what's been going through my head over the last few months is that we are working with RTD, and I think there's things that we could do better. When I hear that maybe our routes aren't matching up, right? People are being asked to wait when they're being dropped off by RTD, I think that's something we can address, and I think there's things that we can do better. And if it's okay with you, I won't answer your question on that one.
That's fair enough. Thank you. That's all I have, Mayor Protem.
Does anybody else want to ask that question? Counselor Ives?
Thank you. Keith, a question for you in terms of the study that the City of Santa Fe is proposing to do in connection with our transit system. Can you describe what the results of that are intended to be?
So I haven't scoped this out or given it too much thought, because I've been kind of busy for the last year, but what I envision is, you know, we've got the starting point of the MPO's Transit Master Plan that kind of flushed out preliminarily a bunch of ideas of how service could be improved or changed and stuff like that. So I envision at the end of that process, we may have a new service plan. So some of the routes, as you see them now, may not exist, or they may have been changed, there may be different schedules. I know as part of that MPO plan, there was a lot of public outreach, a lot of surveying, you know, things that we heard just trying to recollect was, you know, more frequent service on the weekends to specify it as like the community college, more frequent service or service later into the evenings and stuff like that. So I envision we'll be looking at all the information that was collated as part of that process, seeing what we can do within the fiscal constraints to make a better system, and also potentially come forward with, if we got X number of dollars more, we could do this, you know, maybe give you a menu of options of how, of different gradations of improving service.
And talk to me for a moment on the timing on that.
You know, I've got my plate full right now trying to get the downtown South Side and various other projects done. You know, we were looking at the fall initially. We're kind of backlogged on those projects. I'm, it's probably at least the end of the year, probably early next year before we're going out for RFP, if those, if that, under that scenario. So I'm guessing we're probably 12, 18 months away from a conclusion of that study, just to be realistic.
I know when we were talking about the study that we're considering here today, I certainly was a proponent of taking a look. I'm not sure I was fully cognizant of the fact that we were proposing to do a similar study within the city's own system that would postdate this. I mean, part of the presumption that we've stated in doing this study is that service would remain the same. But at some level, we're talking about evaluating whether or not we did need to change that service in the first instance, and that's a process that's underway. So it just makes it a little difficult to look at this against the context of our reassessment of the delivery of service across Santa Fe on all those points that you've just mentioned. And I just, there's part of me that thinks that understanding better how we can improve our own service before looking at consolidating has some sense to it, which is why I'm asking the question about the timing and those types of things. Because, again, if services are to remain the same, or at least that's the analysis, but we think we're going to be changing that service, that raises a few of the issues that folks have talked about here tonight. So, okay, just wanted to try and clarify on that. Thank you.
Counselor Romero?
Madam Mayor, Protem, Counselors, we're at the end of our time with the 6:30 public meeting. But what I'd like to reaffirm are a few of the next steps. Keeping an open mind, what we were tasked to do was to create these scenarios. There's plenty of room for discussion. I think one of the, one of the better things that will occur out of this is looking at what are some of the best management practices from an agency, the NCR TD, that all they do is transit. So I think there's a lot of things to learn from each other around labor, around efficiencies, around some of the outreach that they've done. So let's keep in mind some of the best management practices as you date, perhaps. So let's look at the next steps, just to reaffirm. Our role is to summarize the comments from the governing bodies in the public meetings. We're recording these, similar to what you have, court reportings. We've got Charmaine Clare doing this for us at the public meetings, so they'll be verbatim. They won't be summarized in that sense, they'll be verbatim so that we don't lose anything. So we'll take those comments from the public meetings, and what we've heard to hear, and what we've heard from the RTD board. The consultant team will complete Task Four with a final report, taking into account the comments that were made. And then these will be presented to the RTD and the city of Santa Fe. The final step will be up to you again. It's in your hands as decision-makers, the policymakers, to determine the feasibility of consolidation and associated implementation strategies. And those are, whatever you choose them to be, I know that Tony announced at their board that they would be looking at next steps at their October 12th, at the October 13th meeting. So they've gotten some direction that they need to do some work. We've got to get the information to you. It's a tight timeline, but that's what they're looking at. Tony, did you want to, did I get that right? All right. So we are off to the next two public meetings, and with deep appreciation for the really good questions. When the outreach that I had done, governance certainly was one of the issues, but I think that's part of the negotiations that also occurred. There are things that are set in stone. I think the city of Santa Fe is very well represented on the RTD board. So as the former chair and board member of the RTD, I am really pleased to see that it's absolutely solvent. It's come a long way to be what it was meant to be, which was a regional effort. So kudos to all of you for the hard work you're doing and your time and energy. So we hopefully will see you at a public meeting.
Thank you. Counselor Villarreal?
Thank you. I just have a quick question about the community outreach process. How did they advertise for tonight and tomorrow's meeting?
Mayor Protem, Counselor Villarreal, the outreach was focused on, for my part in particular, was to all of the boards and commissions that the city of Santa Fe has that are interested in transit issues, meeting with all of the decision-makers on both boards, which I believe I met with every one of the counselors and the mayor, as well as staff. Outreach was also included, and I had produced that list to folks, was chain breakers. I met with folks like that one-on-one. Never was successful with Somos, but I'm confident that they'll be coming to the meetings as this is probably one of those issues. So it was not at the public meeting level, it was at the, what are, what are some of the factors that will be driving the consultants in their study and in the strategy? So it was at a much higher level than at that grassroots, but these two public meetings that we are bringing forward the information, I think we'll get a lot of feedback from that also.
So those are targeted outreach?
They were very targeted outreach.
And that was also the ADA?
Correct.
Sorry, the board, the disability?
The mayor's Commission on Disability did get their own meeting, Transit Advisory Board, and there was a couple of others, the tourism folks, the tax board. So there is, I don't have it right in front of me, but all of those boards that are interested, boards and commissions that had an interest in transit or on grocery receipts, for example, were met with.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
We are adjourned.